Start, it's just.
There we go.
We are recording.
All right, I will call this meeting to order. It is 6:02 PM on Monday, February 1st. We will take a roll call, starting with Ms. Ostendorf.
Here.
Ms. Tower?
Here.
Tiff?
Here.
Mr. Bryant?
Yeah.
Ms. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Derrick's?
Here.
And Chair is here. We are, uh, all board members are present this evening. We'll go ahead and stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. It's great to see you all. And I want Anna to share our mission statement this evening.
The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you. Thank you for reading that. It's always an important way to start our meeting and set our tone. So thank you. I love starting that way. Uh, you will see the agenda in our packet. Um, it is reordered slightly. Um, it's meant to help our listeners, our republic, um, so that we can get to the heart of the matter right away, which is, uh, the return to school plan. It was Mr. Bryant's idea that was set up. When our agenda appears that, uh, those who are listening, uh, would be able to, um, have that expressed right away. And I'll just remind you, if, if you are not speaking to, um, mute, uh, yourself, that'd be great. Uh, Arlen is in the queue.
Thank you. Um, I would like to see us reorder this, uh, agenda, uh, when we got reports and committee notes happening after a lot of our other business decisions. Um, I have some items that I think should be brought up prior to our discussion on those items. I was hoping we could put it somewhere, um, after public comment. I know you put it back later, return to school plan. I don't care. It could be after that, but, uh, I think it should be before any business items.
Uh, so you're making all, all of the, uh, the, uh, updates for the consent agenda? Am I understanding that, Arlen?
Uh, I'm asking that we put the reports, committee notes back up closer to where they were before. Um, I think it should be done before business items because some of the, some of the committee reports, I think, are relative prior to making the business decisions.
So after, after public comment, before business items?
That's what I would ask for, but, uh.
Okay. Any other changes, uh, in the agenda? So I'm looking through, oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, putting it, Arlen's request for this meeting above, um, the consent agenda and after the return to school.
I'll second that.
After the return to school. Okay, I got you. Right before, well, I think Arlen was asking for after public comment before business items?
Yeah, I did, but I guess my main thing is I'm all right if it goes other, but communications is usually a category by itself. I, I'm okay with it where Jim's putting it, so.
All right, sounds good. I will add it to, um, the business items on after the return to school plan.
Uh, Pam, can you, can you just clarify for the notes? So, um, what exactly is moving? Just the school board reports?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Would we like administrative reports before that as well? Arlen, what do you think?
I think it should be. I'm, I'm not concerned about it, but all of a sudden you're picking apart all kinds of stuff, so.
Can we just switch numbers four and three?
You could, but Jim's motion is
I think people are
after the return to school plan. I don't remember if he had a second.
He did. I, I'll just add that the return to school plan for some, for some time, it was pushed way towards the end. And so if people listening want to have it, uh, sooner up, um, other boards that I've been on all the time, a lot of time, the committee reports are at the end. But I understand that this is new, so let's, let's try it with, uh, what the motion is today unless the motion doesn't pass.
So the motion on the table is to move the, uh, the committee updates after, before, sorry. Um, I apologize. I don't have, I'm just looking on my computer here. Before the return to school plan. No, consent agenda.
Madam Chair, it's before the consent agenda and after the school plan, the motion is on the table.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm sorry, I'm, Nikki has gotten kicked out, so we're trying to get her back in here. So I'm a little bit scattered right now. All right. Uh, we need, um, uh, the motion on the table is made by Jim, seconded by Holly to move the committee updates as stated. Before the consent agenda. No. Yes. Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Tower?
Yes?
Ms. Tiff?
Hi. Oh, hi. Like, did you, yeah.
Mr. Bryant?
Hi.
Ms. Buck?
Hi.
Mr. Derrick's?
Hi.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So the agenda is amended. All right, thank you. Uh, the first item up on our agenda is the educational plan, so I'll just call your attention to that, number 2.1. Recognitions and upcoming events, 2.2. Anybody have anything they'd like to share?
Carson, is this where I would speak? I'm not sure. I thought it was at the end.
Uh, Nikki, are you talking about, uh, possible topics to discuss at a later meeting?
Is that it? I don't know. I'm, I'm a first timer here, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, if that's the case, then you'd, uh, wait until the very last.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sorry. I was, I reserve my topic.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Thanks. Jennifer?
I just wanted to mention that I saw that it's School Counselors Week and, um, our school counselors are working really hard right now with COVID and everything that's going on. And so I just want to thank them for everything that they're doing at all of our schools, for all of the students. It's a lot of extra work right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other recognitions or upcoming events? Arlen?
Yeah, I just want to mention that we've concluded the MSBA conference. Um, over the last, uh, three weeks, I believe it was. I found some very good things that took place in there. I saw some of our other board members there. Uh, one of the things I really enjoyed was a meet and greet, which was at the very tail end of the last day. I met some pe- people, um, it was very interesting how it was done, but, uh, from Rochester, Pine Island and, and so I don't know if anybody else was in on that, but, uh, was really, I want to recognize the MSBA for at least putting on a real good program under this type of situation without being able to meet person, so. And it was very informative.
I agree. Thank you. It was a really good conference and, uh, we'll look forward to hopefully being in person next year. Any other recognitions or upcoming events? All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment. I have not received any public comment. Carson, have you?
I did not receive any.
Okay. So now we will go to our committee updates. So we will, no, public com- no, public comment, return to school plan. Totally throwing me off. I apologize.
Uh, we do have Shonda Jorgensen available to answer some questions that one of the board members had, uh, before the meeting. So she will tune in here. Uh, included with the board packet would be the county COVID rates, uh, other COVID data that was just updated today after a meeting with the county. Um, and then we'll also talk about issues related to the school return plan. Uh, Shonda can review the information about vaccinations of staff members, uh, testing of staff members and remote learning for selected classrooms. So Shonda, if you could, uh, jump in and, uh, uh, hopefully you have, uh, the email with the questions that one of the board members.
Yep, I do.
Okay.
Um, can you see me?
We can.
Okay, I can't see myself, so I was like, where'd I go? Um, okay, so the question that was brought up, uh, the first one was, um, how many staff vaccinations we have gotten and how many are expected to come up? Uh, so the first week we received eight from the state, um, and the next week we received 24. Um, and then just Sunday night, we, well, we got an email Friday afternoon from the state saying, um, they're no longer going to allocate us, say, okay, you have this many, pick your people. Um, they are now saying have your people email us or sign up with us and we'll kind of take over that, that situation, so, um. And as far as who's getting them and when they're getting them, we've only given out the 32 from the state. And we got, uh, uh, you know, guidance basically from the Minnesota Department of Health on how to prioritize the different, um, to, you know, staff. And this staff also includes bus drivers, you know, outside staff that work for us, any contracted, uh, people like that. Um, and they said that you need to prioritize in-person hybrid learning models, which we're all in. Um, and that would be elementary, um, staff, staff providing school-aged care, early learning staff and special education staff providing direct services. So we looked at that as if, we, we looked at people who are in the same classroom with the same group of people every day. Uh, we looked at people who are in that situation, but also are working with a population that can't social distance or can't wear masks. Um, and then we kind of went, okay, you know, of those staff, we started looking at age and any, um, accommodations that they might have. Um, do they have any health concerns? Are they not even working because they can't be around COVID, that kind of thing? And so it was, it's not an easy process. Um, so we got at least 32 people out to the state. And now that the state is asking for everyone's information, they can, they can kind of do it that way. I don't know how the state is going to do it. I don't know if it's a first come, first served, if it's a lottery, or what kind of information they're collecting from everyone. I think right now they're just trying to get understand how many people they're going to have to end up vaccinating. Um, are there any questions on vaccines? No? Okay. Um, and then the next question was, um, can you let us know the process that is used in determining, uh, who quarantines when a case is reported? So when we find out a case is positive, uh, most likely we, we find out from the positive person. There have been a few times where the state will contact us and say, hey, you have a positive person. We'll go and find out, okay, they were positive, they started having symptoms on a Friday. And so we have to go back two days from the onset of symptoms to, um, that consider their infectious period. They're, they're considered infected, uh, infectious two days before that. So we go, okay, they were here Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Who, what classroom were they in? What grade were they in? Um, we talked to the teachers. We say, who else was in your class, that kind of thing. And so it's, it's a, it starts with a positive. Um, and if they're old enough to kind of tell us how their day went, we'll talk to them. And then we just expand from there. Um, and so we get information from that person. Then we call everyone that said that they were in that classroom or could have potentially been a close contact and say, do you think you were a close contact? You know, so it's, it's a long process. Um, the elementary, uh, classes, there is a stipulation by the Minnesota Department of Health that says if you spend most of the day in the same room with someone who was positive with COVID, then most likely you will have to quarantine the entire class. And so that's why we saw kind of a spat there of, of whole classes going out. But they're spending, you know, six, seven hours a day together. They're in the same room. They may be social distant. They may be wearing their masks, but they're still in that same room together. Um, and we're trying to be as safe as possible with this. Um, and so that's why we're quarantining classes. Are there any questions on that? Okay. I, I'm here all night, so I ask if you got questions. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good evening, Shonda. I'm just kind of looking at the COVID, uh, information that's sent out every, for every week or so, maybe over a two-week period. I went all the way down to the bottom, um, earlier today and all that. It's kind of reassuring if you haven't looked at that. Back Thanksgiving, uh, that 10 weeks ago, something like that, all 87 counties had 50 or more of their population or in that number, 50% or more. 10 weeks later, 19 only. So we're making steps. We're taking, the things that are happening that are, um, dropping that number of COVID, um, and people getting it are, are, are show by this information that is dropping. So that's encouraging at all. Very encouraging. Um, and as I, you look at our numbers, there's Goodview County and, and all that, they're dropping too, so. Um, that's reassuring, especially with the vaccine and all that. And, uh, as we're going forward, I'm just kind of, kind of keep watching this one too, because about, we have 87 counties in the state. Like I said, all 87, 10, 8 weeks ago, and now we're down to 19. So it's encouraging. A lot of work by a lot of people. Um, I'll leave my comments about how the, how much the state on the vaccines and how they do it with the, with people. Um, all the costs that they're probably incurred by picking out a few people, like eight in Red Wing. There's four in Zambroda. School, I mean, the resources spent just on that. That's beside the point. We didn't come to listen to that, so. But anyway, thank you for the nice news, the good news, uh, the good information. It's always beneficial on people listening. Well, certainly, uh, I hope we'll see it as a step in the right direction. So, thank you.
Do we have other comments on the back to school plan in general or questions for Shonda?
See Pam, since there aren't any questions, if, if I could just add that uh, over the next couple of weeks, the administrative team will at least be looking at options for possibly returning, uh, more students back to school. That doesn't mean that'll be the recommendation, but we want to look at it, uh, diligently over the next couple of weeks. And so we will give an update as far as planning and possible recommendations at our next meeting.
I'm happy to hear you say that, Carson, because I think that, um, we need to be ready with the plan for when our numbers are down far enough that we can accept students back. I don't think that's the time to, to plan is when the numbers go down. I think we need to have a plan and then when the numbers go down, we can implement it. So we need to get our students back to school as soon as possible in a safe manner. And, um, I know that there's so many families and students that, that need to get back to school. Um, and it would also be really great to, uh, get our seniors back so that they could end their high, high school career um, at our building. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can at least trend towards that. Jennifer?
Are there currently, um, high need, at-risk students at the high school four days a week? Um, I know there was talk about possibly bringing back some additional students. I'm just wondering if that has happened or not.
I believe in some cases, uh, there are some students who are here four days a week. Uh, they are generally, uh, ones who would have, uh, an individualized education program uh, on file. There may be some other exceptions as well, but yes, the short answer is yes, there are some.
Any other questions on our back to school plan? All right, now I think we're ready to move on, on our agenda with committee updates. All right, so we'll start with, um, operations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met tonight, uh, real quickly, a couple of things. The Burnside Project, parking lot project came under actual costs or under budget by $50,000, which is good news for the, I mean, which of these letters? LCFM, I think it is, the money we get from the state for projects in, in our district, uh, current project, not new. Um, the other one is, uh, the other one was, uh, reaching out to, uh, looking at a playground at Twin Bluff Middle School. That, uh, with, uh, the arrangement of the students at middle school, that is something that we've looked at sometime down the road. I know Arlen, uh, first got on the board, he was, uh, brought the idea up or had renewed the idea. Uh, Mr. Palmetier, uh, is received, uh, no more than, no less than six calls or six contacts and people interested in helping getting going. Uh, looking at some type of a playground for the area of our city and our school district there. Uh, we went back. Hopefully the city of Red Wing can, uh, uh, they can contact them, have a look at a partnership there since it'll benefit the residents, the apartment building across the street and neighborhood around there. So we'll continue to update it. In the next meeting, we'll meet again the first Monday of, uh, March, which is the first. Uh, they'll bring back some ideas, uh, there's some other costs, you know, a lot of things related to this. It has to be a big community effort. And, uh, I get a solid plan in place, but, uh, the idea is going forward. We are looking at community involvement, uh, fundraising, donations and that to look at. See if we can actually put a playground in that area, Twin Bluff and Pioneer Road area, so. Uh, Arlen or Jennifer have anything further to add on that? Um, feel free. So other than that, mortars come down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Just the cost on this, um, the above ground cost right now, if we were to duplicate so, duplicate something similar to Su- Sunnyside was around $151,000 dollars to do that. And it could be when you build a playground, it could be 50/50 cost above ground and below ground, so, um, without doing soil borings and other stuff, not, it's not really known how much it's going to cost for the groundwork. But, uh, the tentative vision is something similar to what Sunnyside School has. Um, if we can, if they can put it together.
Well, that's exciting moving forward, so that's great news. Thank you. Uh, legislative and policy, any updates from that committee?
We will be meeting in two weeks.
All right. And finance, any updates from you, Holly?
Uh, yes, there were lots of things going on in finance this last Monday in January. Um, so many things that we tabled the discussion until the end of February so that we could bring the information back to the board um, for the first meeting in March. But a couple of the big things is we have to reduce the budget. And we have options on how much we want to try to reduce. The recommend, the recommendation is what's called scenario two, reducing 2.2 million in our budget. Um, that would put us back on track with the referendum spending plan. And at the end of fiscal year '22, the fund balance would be 2.8 million. If we keep on the same trajectory that we are on right now, spending the amount of money we are, at the end of 2022, we'd have $465,000. So we have to do some significant things in our budgeting and make some hard decisions. And I don't know what that looks like, but we will come back with some ideas for the board to go over, um, beginning of March. Because it could look at staff reductions. It could look at, you know, consolidating things, um. But it's, it's really kind of scary to think about when you work at your, um, bare minimums like we do in a lot of areas, to have to cut. But we need to be prepared for it. Um, the other thing is, is our enrollment is declining. And it has declined significantly this year. Um, whether or not we'll be able to get those students back next year is a million-dollar question. What will attract them back? With, um, the charter school potentially opening in one fiscal year, we are, um, looking at having to get very creative and finding a way to meet a variety of needs of students that we maybe haven't done in the past. But that's not a bad thing. Improving and enhancing is always a good thing. So we have a couple big, a couple big things facing us as the board, and we're going to have to look at it very carefully. And I know you're all aware that we have to cut things in the budget. You're, you, you, you've been talk, we've been talking about it. We do have a couple, um, chunks of money coming from the state. One chunk of money we got last fall, and we use that to pay for distance, distance teachers K through four. But we did not use that to pay for any distance teachers past fourth grade. So that's one of the reasons there's such a disparity there. Is that those eight teachers were paid with that money. We're getting that money again. We just don't know how much, and we don't know when. So there was some early talk in the personnel committee meeting about substitutes and how do we pay for, what, what, what do we need, um, different things like that? We'll have better number answers hopefully by the end of February. Um, Jackie did a fantastic job of getting this all prepared. And so she's hoping, like Carson, that we will have some more, um, financial specific money by the end of the month, so we know what numbers we're playing with. And Jim, um, we missed Nikki there. Um, we, we're updating her as we go, but Jim, what else did you, um, what did, what did you want to add?
I thought, uh, Madam Chair, you did, as a finance committee, you did a fine job of, of the synopsis of it. It was quite a lengthy top conversation. It was my longest finance committee meeting ever. And, but it was well needed because of the scenarios and the ramifications that were presented that night for us for review only at this point, but we're going to come back, like Chair said there, that, uh, later this month and go over it again to bring it to the full, full board in March.
Yes, so, um, I think the one shining star, of course, was our food budget. And I don't know how to use the technical term for that, but some of the work that Brent has done with the food service, um, uh, staff and some of the meals and that has gone splendidly well. So that's one area that we're not struggling in. Doesn't mean we can buy pencils with that money, but it does mean that that's one area we've been extremely solid in and very fortunate that we've had such a great team working in that capacity. And whether or not the state's going to recoup, you know, the budgets that have had to be spent down in, um, community ed and different things like that, time will tell. So Carson, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I think that was, uh, well done. Uh, the, the big unknown, in addition to, you know, e- exact allocations from the state would be any federal stimulus money uh, that may or may not be approved in February or March, uh, by the federal government. So we're going to have to wait and see what happens there.
Well, and is it true, Holly, that part of our issue, I mean, budgets all across Minnesota are suffering, but it's, it's, it's a combination of having to spend extra money to meet COVID needs or needs through COVID, but also the loss of revenue. Um, we've got students leaving. Um, and we have to hire more teachers and cost of everything is going up. And so, and we've dug into our fund balance, which is our rainy day fund, which was the right thing to do, but we don't want it to go to zero. We don't want it to go to 420,000. We need to make sure that we've got a good rainy day fund there for another rainy day. So, um, it was appropriate to use some of those rainy day funds because COVID is a rainy day, but now we need to build that back up. And in order to do that, we need to, um, tighten our belts quite a bit, it sounds like.
Yeah, we have four scenarios, well, five actually, that, that Jackie shared with us. And her recommendation was scenario two. So if you get a chance to look at the document, um, it's pretty self-explanatory, but it, it all moves into, um, how we would do the referendum coming up. And, and looking in that, in that capacity. And if we had to do a referendum, I know those are always big questions, and that's been used a lot in the community. We need you to do this because we, you want us to vote for the referendum. We need you to do this because you want us to vote for the referendum. So, you know, there's a lot of needs to be met. And I don't know, um, like I said, I don't know what the And I don't know, like I said, I don't know what the creativity is that's going to come out in the next couple of months of where we have to cut and consolidate and improve. But I have some strong faith that some people will be able to put some things together that will give the board a good chance to look at what we need to do going forward.
Thank you, Holly. Me too.
It's a big task.
I know, right? And then Personnel met just earlier today.
I have my name in the queue for.
Sorry, Arlen.
I have my name in the queue for Finance Committee. I got a couple of questions after reading the notes. One is the bank RFP. So I'm a little confused here. When did we authorize the committee to make decisions? Shouldn't that have been a recommendation to the board?
Say more.
I don't know. Two people at a committee meeting could decide that we're going to do a bank RFP.
That was, Carson, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, it was a discussion that was brought up during the committee. And so the, the feeling of the committee members was that we should do that on a more regular basis than what we've done in the past. So you're right, Arlen, it did not go to the full school board to actually authorize the RFPs.
Yeah, I find that to be a little alarming because committees are here to advise the board with a recommendation and that procedure was not followed. And I think it probably is time, I'm not going to make any more on it, but I think once they come in, unless something changes or the board wants to, I think that's a board decision to decide who is selected in the end. Second thing I have here is credit card limits. Am I reading this correct? That you're recommending to, or you are recommending, or you decided that the credit card limits is going to be reviewed by the Finance Committee now? Is that right?
Um, Arlen, I wanted to answer your other question about the, about the bank proposals. No decision is going to be made about which bank we're going to go to until that comes to the board. All of those proposals that are being sent out are going to be looked at by the Finance Committee and then brought to the board. So, yeah, that, that wasn't a decision that we're going to unilaterally make without the board's input and the credit cards. The, the feeling behind bringing those to the board every year to review, nobody was clear on why they have them brought to the board. And so in the experience of the finance person, they don't bring these things to the board on other boards in other school districts. It's kind of an in-house financial piece. So we decided to keep it there.
Okay, so that's decided now, is that right? Or is...
That's what.
I'm going to go back to January 4th minutes and the directive that was given to the Finance Committee as soon as I find it here. Motion made by Tower and seconded by Bryant to approve the list of corporate credit card holders as is, submit the list to the Finance Committee for review and bring it back to the school board at a later date. On roll call, the motion passed 7-0. That's not what I heard happen if I'm reading these notes right. So I, I hope that we get this brought back to the board for action at a future time.
What kind of action are you looking for?
Well, you apparently, two people at a Finance Committee meeting decided that this is what's going to happen. The entire board referred this to the Finance Committee for you to discuss it and bring it back to the board, to the school board.
So had I, just curious, had I said, and then we talked about the credit cards? Would that have been sufficient?
This is the motion that you made.
Right.
To refer to the Finance Committee and bring it back to the school board at a later date. That's not what I'm reading is what happened.
So, so I'm asking if I had mentioned that, would that have been sufficient?
No, it'd be, it's just school board action because we referred it for, to the committee for study and then to come back here.
It's not a later date. A later date could be next week. It could be three weeks.
It might be, but that's not what I'm reading.
These haven't even been approved by anybody because they just were typed up their draft these minutes by Jackie. So if there's some correction that needs, I'd be more than happy to review it.
Well.
But don't tell us that we're not doing something because we're not bringing something back. I mean, let's go. I mean, if you got some, an issue with stuff, spit it out.
I put it out here now.
Well, you got, you can't do this. It's not a later date yet. When we, when we do these minutes and if we need to bring something, we'll bring something back as for the, the motion. And right now, we're not ready to do that. So it's not the later date yet.
I'm not going to take it any farther tonight. I've expressed my dissatisfaction with what I'm reading. Everybody's aware of it. It could continue on this at a later time.
Anytime.
All right. My hope is the Finance Committee will address my concerns.
We will be happy to see all board members' decisions, all board members' comments for, in any committee, not just Arlen's. So we'll be happy to do that for any board member that wishes in the Finance or Operation, whatever committee anybody's on or I'm on. Thank you for your comment.
As I remember the credit card issue, there is numbers all over the place and you wanted to clean it up, which I think is a really important thing to do because those numbers of credit limits are kind of all over and arbitrary and who knows how they were. So my understanding was that you were going to, in your committee, just kind of look at them and make it more uniform, user-friendly, make more sense of that list. Is that, that I'm seeing you not? So, all right. We'll move on to Personnel. Arlen, one more thing?
Well, I just quoted the minutes from the January meeting that said what was supposed to happen, not what was supposed, I literally read it word for word from the approved minutes from January 4th, what was supposed to take place. So that's what they were supposed to do.
I didn't know, the big minutes from a week ago to this meeting when we haven't had a chance to go before the Finance Committee with the minutes to amend, to adopt them or accept them or change them. So this is something for your information. So thank you for pointing it out. But nobody's asking, we're not here to approve minutes. We're here to, for your information on the, the topic of the minutes of the, of the committee that's put together by Jackie. So.
All right. I think we're going to move on. We'll, we will revisit this and figure, figure all of those pieces out so that it makes sense for all of us as a board. Our Personnel Committee meeting happened just prior to this meeting at 3:45 today. The biggest piece was that we talked about an e-learning plan moving forward. In the future, before school starts in the fall, we need to have a plan in place for our snow days, what that's going to look like moving forward. Jen Grove, who is the principal at Burnside, is working on a plan for us where it's not solidified yet, but we're getting feedback and working on that plan moving forward. So that is more to come, but it's an exciting piece that we'll be able to offer starting next year, if not this year still, because we are in e-learning already. We talked about employee reporting procedures, who needs to report on what day, based on a critical closure or a normal closure. That, there was a nice chart that was provided, which is in the minutes in the, on the board packet for, under the Personnel Committee. We talked about some HR updates. Amy French joined us and kind of talked about all the positions that are being filled or not filled and strategies moving forward on how to fill those. We talked about the organizational chart. Mr. Hartman came forward and talked about strength and conditioning coach. And then we talked about the district office receptionist. And so that, anything else that I missed, Jennifer or Holly?
No.
No. All right. Then, any other committees that anyone would like to report on? I know, Technology met.
Um, I, Technology was the only one I was able to make it to this schedule. It's kind of like a checkerboard. And I appreciate everybody's understanding as they kind of learn how to navigate through the system. But they didn't really, it was a really short meeting and just kind of sat back and observed and kind of understood my role. But the one thing I do want to report back with that was said, used all five-year budget plans because of COVID-19. That's kind of where they're trying to figure out how to go forward with. Do not have funds for Technology Department. Go Guardian replacing Lightspeed. Accomplished years three, four and five and, and just one and two. So again, that's circling back to use all five-year budget plans because of COVID. But I hope to find out more information at the next meeting.
Thanks, Nikki. Anna, you were in the queue.
The Community Education Advisory Council met. And I guess one big takeaway to share is that the February through April brochure for community ed is out. So of course, that is available on the district website. It's a little bit different than in years past because things are changing more rapidly. So it's a digital catalog instead of kind of that mailed out one that we might be used to. But a lot of great content in there to look over. And then just an acknowledgement that Marcia Jensen has retired from community ed. And of course, she was a great resource in that office and did a lot of work with putting together this catalog specifically in past years. So thanks to her and we will miss her and hope she's enjoying Florida.
Yes, I know I would be. Thank you. Happy retirement, Marcia. Other, other updates, any other committees?
Um, I put my name in the queue for the Good Hugh County Ed.
Good, go ahead.
Um, we met last week and it was a fast and furious budget meeting. And the board approved the proposed buzz budget and voted on the same board chair and the same vice chair. And they combined clerk and treasurer. And then talked about using the superintendent's evaluation process to move forward in evaluating Sherri Johnson as the executive director of Good Hugh County Ed and kind of take pieces from that. I don't necessarily know how it's going to play out, but we're looking at going forward with that in some capacity, which is good. And yeah, lots of things were presented at that meeting, but it was done specific, fast, furious. And so those were some of the big nuggets. Any questions? Oh, Sonia Smith, retiring, not retiring, but resigning from Red Wing is such a heartbreak. And we know, we talked about it before, there were some interviews last week. So hopefully, we will have a replacement coming. Somebody who can fill her shoes and hit the ground running, hopefully.
Thanks, Holly. Arlen, I apologize that I missed, I missed you in the queue. And then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is the reason, what I'm bringing up here now, I wanted this prior to our other discussions going forward. Curriculum, instruction and, and assessment committee met here last week. And we have a big communication problem, in my opinion. And the board is, or that committee says there's a communication issue. Hardly anybody really knew what Flight Pass was. Some thought that it was just something specific for the well-educated students that are going to the farthest part of the college. Some thought it was just maybe special needs kids. It's totally... It, it took a lot of time to explain that and, and get that figured out amongst people as we're trying to go forward with what's going on. And in my opinion, we've gotten so accustomed to using acronyms and, and terms that sound catchy that we forgot how to communicate to, to ordinary people, our students, our parents. Flight Pass is a very nice name, but really, why don't we just call it something like college career readiness or, or whatever it happens to be? So as we go forward in our meeting tonight, I would hope when we get to the high school course of studies and everything and Flight Pass is there, that we really take a look at what we're doing and maybe put some explanation of what these words are. Flight Pass sounds great, but to me, it sounds like somebody is trying to learn how to fly a plane. That's the way I heard it. And, and so I just wanted to point that out. And Jennifer was also at the meeting. I don't know if she wants to add anything to it.
Jennifer, we can't. All right. Sorry about that. Nikki?
I forgot to update you on the American Indian Parent Committee. Just because I have dual roles on that one now, parent and committee liaison. And, and then maybe Arlen can jump into because that was, we had a meeting during my sickness and then I think we had a, just a Native American, the parents after, because Arlen and Carsten were not aware of the meeting that I was missing. Anyways, so we're looking at to get more Native American parent involvement in this committee and looking to open up better communications with our native parents and seeing what all their individual needs are. So I think that, that's where I left off because I wasn't able to attend that actual, the second meeting as a native parent. And I suppose, um, being on school board too, I don't know.
Thank you for that update, Nikki. I'm glad to hear that that met and you were able to get there. That's good. Holly?
Uh, yeah, I know Jennifer's not able to talk and maybe she could have expounded on this. But Arlen, I'm curious to know, who didn't know what Flight Pass was? Only because I'm curious and I want to know how the communication needs to be improved upon and what specifically was missing. Because I know as a board, we've talked about it a million times. That doesn't mean it transfers. That doesn't mean it goes anywhere other than our lips to the screen. So what was the confusion behind it?
Well, first off, nobody really knew what Flight Pass was. And here, it's been something we've been talking about for two years. And these are parents and, and of students and members of the community that are, I thought, really up on what's going on in our district. And, and they were at a loss to what Flight Pass really was. And as discussion continued on, it sounded like there was this communication issues all over from the committee members. That's what, what kind of came out in the end is that they've, we're failing in communicating our stuff. And, and it's not that we aren't trying, that we're doing stuff. It's that I, I'm trying to put it on a way, I think it's that people aren't understanding what we're saying sometimes. So we need to work out how to relay what we're doing to the person that's not in the, in on the school board or in administration or, or, or staff or whatever it is. We're not getting, we're not talking in something that people are understanding, I guess. Because we, we put Flight Pass out in the community. People are knowing what it is. Know that it's there, but they don't understand what it is.
Okay. Yeah.
I, I can't identify all the problems, but it just continues on from what we heard during, well, not even just this last run for the school board with all the members running for school board saying that we need to improve communication. We heard communication was an issue before referendums even. So we need, need to work very strongly on it. But my point for tonight is, we need to really make it understandable in that course curriculum and everything that, what Flight Pass is. There is one long, two-page, three-page document in there that explains Flight Pass very detailed. But unless you look for that particular thing, you may not find it when you're going through it, if you overlook that part of it. So we'll, I'll talk about that later. Does that answer your question, Holly?
Uh, Jennifer? Uh, we know we can't hear you, but she did say that Arlen is correct. It was a small group of community members at the meeting. Thank you for typing that in.
Pam?
Yes.
I had my name in the queue too, and I just wanna, um, just maybe back Arlen's um, thought, pro- uh, thought about this up as on the other side. Um, I was re- someone part of that reached out to me on a, on the tribal side. And I honestly thought that it was, they were working with, because we have a Fight, Flight Pass grant that we work with or something similar to that. And so I thought that's what they were working, that's what they were working with. I was consulting about birds and, um, that's what I thought it was at first. But then the, uh, I don't know if he's the leader or the director or what of that. Um, he reached out and he better explained what it was to me. And then I actually, I'm not really sure what he wants from, you know, I want more detail what he wants from me on tribal side. So we're going to have a phone conversation, but that's just from dealing with that on the other side.
Thanks for that, um, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. Communication's been the breakdown of so many great organizations over time. It's good that we're addressing and looking at this. Communication is something that's vital for every organization. Um, the second one is, uh, we're going to talk about it, but, uh, Holly and I were, have a joint powers agreement. They're modifying that tonight, which we'll have, uh, later on in the meeting. If there's any questions, we can try to answer them then. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, any other committee updates that we'd like to talk about? All right. Now, as I understood, the agenda amended that we're gonna leave the administrative reports till later. Is that correct? Yes. So then the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything that they would like to, uh, pull from the consent agenda? All right. So then I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Holly, seconded. And a second. Any discussion? We will take a roll call vote then to approve the agenda as presented, starting with Ms. Tifft.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the consent agenda passes seven, zero.
And I just wanted to pop in and say congratulations to the retirees. Um, my kids had both, um, Ms. Pattetts and Ms. Bergerson. Um, and I'm sure that, um, the Kim Mensinger, the cook, probably worked with my kids at some point too. So, um, congratulations to them and thank them for their service.
Good, good call.
Thank you.
I went to move Kim. So she did a wonderful, she was there a lot of years too. So good call on all of them. Enjoy your retirement.
Congratulations. Yeah. Uh, next on the agenda is the resolution, accepting donations and grants.
On behalf of the school board, I'd like to thank the Haven of Hope of Red Wing for their donation of school supplies.
Absolutely. Uh, so I am looking to, um,
I'm looking to approve the donation. Motion to approve the donation.
Jim, did you make, you're kind of muffled. Uh, did you make that motion?
Motion to approve the donation.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll second.
Motion to approve made by Jim, seconded by Holly. Any discussion? All right. We'll take a roll call vote. This time we'll start with Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tifft?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. That passes seven, zero. Uh, Arlen, you're in the queue.
Yeah, I pulled the item one from the consent agenda and we never acted on it.
Tonight?
Yeah.
I did not hear any pulling of any number on the consent agenda when I asked. No one spoke, or at least I didn't hear you say that.
I didn't hear it either.
I was in the queue and I, well, you've approved it, so I don't know what we can do right now, but we have an issue on the consent agenda uh, from the minutes that needs to be addressed. And if I, if you didn't catch it, I'm not sure I will do it.
I, I, yes, I didn't know what the protocol on that would be. If somebody could weigh in on that, we just approved the consent agenda as, as is.
I think, uh, Arlen, perhaps you could share what the concern is and then we can, uh, decide what action we should take based on that.
Right. I, I'm sorry. I know I asked to pull item one from the consent agenda and I thought we approved it minus that item. The issue is on our minutes and it's not just this last one, but going back other ones too. The, the minutes say that the consent agenda was approved and it's nothing else is approved in the consent agenda. Um, doesn't say what they are. And going back to policy on the consent agenda apology, um, it states consent agenda items are approved en masse by one vote of the school board. The consent agenda items must be separately recorded in the minutes and we're not doing that right now. Um, so each one of the hires, uh, resignations, um, approving of the minutes, every one of those items have to show up in our minutes following our own policy. So, um, I guess I'll leave it up to you guys to take it from there. We've already approved the minutes at this point and, and decide how you're going to proceed in the future.
Yeah, we can certainly, uh, do a little research on that, Arlen, and then, uh, make that adjustment, uh, starting with, uh, tonight's uh, consented or the next meeting consent agenda.
It's policy two oh three point six, if you want to refer to it.
Arlen, are you okay with that moving forward?
Well, yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm not sure. We, we basically violated our policy with our minutes for at least, uh, two, two meetings and maybe more. And, and, uh, really approving a consent agenda minutes without saying what it is is worthless in a minute. So I'm okay with it if you address it at a future meeting.
Thank you, Arlen. I did not see your name in the queue, nor did I hear you ask to pull item one. Uh, so, um, I apologize for that. Um,
I would.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say maybe the policy committee can look that over and come back to the board and kind of explain that through. So we're more clear on what you're saying, Arlen.
I don't really see any need for it to be explained. It's in the policy and that's the way it should be.
Well, I'm just asking.
That's generally what's done with consent agendas. I think it's actually coming out of statute.
I was just asking.
I'll take a look at policy two oh three point six and, uh, Jim and, and Carson and I can discuss it tomorrow in our weekly meeting. How's that sound? We'll make a plan moving forward. All right. Uh, moving on with our agenda, three point four negotiations sessions.
As all of you know, uh, on March 30th, we approved a resolution to start conducting all of our meetings virtually, uh, because of the pandemic. Uh, we have been doing that for board meetings, workshops, special meetings and committee meetings since that time. Uh, there was a discussion recently about the possibility of at least conducting negotiations sessions, uh, in person if both sides were okay with that. And so the recommendation, uh, that's presented tonight would be, uh, to allow in-person negotiation sessions with certified bargaining groups until further notice. So again, uh, the key word there is allow. You know, we'd want some flexibility because if one of our board members, you know, is out, you know, quarantined, for example, then we may want to conduct that virtually. Um, as in addition, if, if one of their members i- is not available, then we'd want to do the same thing. So, uh, that's the recommendation.
Anna?
I would like to make a motion to allow in-person negotiation sessions with certified bargaining groups until further notice.
This is Jennifer, I'll second.
A motion made by Anna, seconded by Jennifer. Any other discussion? All right. We will begin the roll call vote with, uh, we'll start with Nikki Buck.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tifft?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. That passes seven, zero. Thank you. I'm on the negotiations team and it will be nice to have that flexibility. Uh, and, uh, I know that Jennifer and Anna also will appreciate that as will our bargaining group. So thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the Red Wing High School Program of Studies.
Uh, George Nemnich is available to, uh, review the three documents that were included on the board agenda packet.
Hello, um, we, I, I also have Mick Wenland here, uh, and, uh, we, I, you know, it's interesting, uh, Arlen, you brought up the flight pathways and, and I know that's one of, one of the packets I sent you. Uh, we'll, we'll address that and some of the questions you had, uh, regarding communication of that. Um, I will say this, uh, on Flight Pass and, and, and we can have a discussion about this a little bit later. Uh, you know, we gotta remember we're, this is, this is a process that's going to take some time because in part, uh, we had some good steam going until the pandemic hit. And then of course, things change and, and so we just have to kind of monitor and adjust and, and we'll, we'll get there. We'll get there. We, uh, I feel very confident with that. And, and I know, uh, Mick will have more to say about the, the, uh, the Flight Path Guide you received. Um, I do know that the, the name can be deceiving. Um, so I, I, I'll give you that. Um, but the, the name actually kind of derives, that's a, it's a statewide, uh, program that, uh, you know, Career Pathways is kind of a state, uh, deal. And so that's, I think we were just using it as, you know, kind of a, uh, a catchy name for Red Wing with Flight Pathways. So, you know, and, and, uh, but I, I'm, I'm going to let Mick expand more on that when we get to it. What I wanted to do, uh, uh, tonight to start with is kind of give you a, a, a timeline of, so the Program of Studies, uh, you've gotten those documents. I just want to let you know, first off, there may be some, uh, some typographical things that need to be corrected, just so you know. Uh, if, if you saw those and, uh, this is not the, the, the final, final draft, but I wanted to get you a draft, uh, by Wednesday of last week. So that's, that's why I kind of rushed it to press. Uh, but it's, we, we're still working on it. Beth Kelly's been kind of going through it. Um, and trying to get, because the pages were a little off as well. Uh, but I wanted to, I wanted to give you an idea of what the, basically the, the, uh, the meat of the document was about. So, um, so I'm going to talk about that, but I wanted to talk about, uh, kind of our timeline here. Uh, so, uh, we're going to move forward and register, uh, seven, eight and nine, twelve. As, and as, as you all know, you, you approved the, uh, the reconfiguration for next year to be seven, seven through twelve in our building. So we basically took the, uh, uh, the Program of Studies and kind of broke it into two, which actually is probably a good thing, uh, especially for parents who, who were part of the eight, twelve thing. And that's a long document. So this is actually going to be a good thing to kind of break it up a little bit. Um, but we're going to register for seven, uh, uh, seven, eight, uh, as a seven-period day and eight, and nine, twelve is an eight-period day. Now, Holly mentioned earlier about, you know, when she did the finance committee report, there, there may be some, uh, uh, things that might affect that and impact that. So we understand that. But we just wanted to get a registration moving forward. We wanted to get something scheduled because what, uh, or we wanted to get the kids registered because that will make our job easier, even if we have to change the schedule or tweak the schedule a little bit. We'll at least have the students registered and, and so that was our idea. So we, that's why our, our Red Wing High School site team, uh, uh, had consensus on a seven-period, seven, eight schedule. Um, and then I, a nine, twelve high school, a eight-period day. So, uh, that's that. Um, now, uh, as far as the timeline goes, uh, registration, we'd like to start it the week of the fifteenth, okay? And, and, uh, so, uh, what we're looking at doing is, um, on the sixteenth, we'll be, uh, presenting registration, uh, presentations and material to the students, uh, A through K, um, and, and those that are online, of course. And then, uh, on the eighteenth, uh, February eighteenth, the students L through Z. And this will be done, uh, during second hour at the beginning of second, the second block, I should say, third period, second block. Um, and then, um, online only students, of course, will be getting that information at the same time. Um, there's a registration form we're going to use. So set, uh, just so you know, seventh graders will, they will be registering through synergy and that'll be done. Uh, Ms. Pagel, our seven, uh, grade seven and eight counselor is going to assist them with the synergy, uh, registration. Eight through eleventh graders will be registering through a Google form, the use of a Google form. Okay? Um, a week later, so the next week, uh, uh, Monday, the twenty-second, we're going to be, uh, having the students submit, uh, those students A through K will submit their, uh, Google form of registration to their counselor and then, uh, the same will be done on the twenty-fifth, uh, by our students L through Z. And our online only students will do the same at that time as well. Um, so that's kind of the registration timeline we're looking at. Here's the reason we wanted, it, it seems, I know, probably maybe a little bit aggressive. The, here's the reason. We did the same thing last year. Um, and the idea was, it, part of this is because spring break hits, uh, right at the beginning of March. So it's a lot easier to get this stuff done prior to the spring break. And then, uh, we'll work on it over break and then into the next few weeks of March. But we're going to need to know, uh, kind of where our numbers are at for classes, uh, for sure by the end of March. Cause we're going to have to know kind of what our, uh, our needs are going to be for FTE and things like that. And of course, uh, we may have some, you know, uh, reductions. So we're going to have to really know that. And then, uh, the, you know, we really want to have an idea by April first of, if we're going to have to reduce staff, we need to know that by April first. So that's kind of why we have to do it this way. I know we've had questions. I, I had high school staff asking the same questions and legitimate questions like, why would we, uh, isn't this put in the cart before the horse with the potential for, uh, reductions and things? Yes and no. I mean, it, the fact is we have to get registered. Last year we did this and I'm so happy we did it when we did because as you all know, uh, March thirteenth came around and, and, uh, we didn't have students anymore in the building and that would have been a disaster if we hadn't registered before then. So this actually works out really well. Uh, it'll help, it, it'll just give us a lot of time to kind of make some good decisions moving forward about what we can offer and, and things like that. Um, as far as the course catalog goes, the nine through twelve is pretty much what we've offered in the past. Um, and, uh, the new classes that you, uh, had heard about, uh, uh, a couple of meetings ago are in there. Um, and, and so, uh, we are, I, you know, I know last year we talked about this. We, we're at the point now where we're going to offer twenty-eight credits or it, it takes twenty-eight credits to graduate. Um, and, uh, that's, uh, a little bit of a reduction from, uh, a couple of years ago when it was thirty-two. Uh, but we also, uh, have study hall in that, uh, uh, in that mix. Okay? Um, and, and so in order to make sure that we allow for some of that, uh, play in the, in a student's schedule, we wanted to make sure we, we didn't have such an, uh, a high number of credits that they would have to attain. Um, and then, uh, as far as the, the seven, eight, uh, course catalog, I, I noticed one thing when I was going through it, uh, Um, and then, uh, as far as the, the 7-8, uh, course catalog, I, I noticed one thing when I was going through it, uh, this afternoon. Um, the, uh, the grade seven electives had animal science, uh, that was a, I don't know how that got there, but, um, so that's not supposed to be on there, um, so we, I, we've already deleted it in the, in the, uh, in the copy, but I just wanted to let you know that. Um, yeah, there might be some changes with electives as how we offer them, depending on what we decide, uh, moving forward. As far as, uh, you know, if, if there's some reductions, we may have to go to more quarter, uh, credit, uh, for electives to fit them in, uh, it, uh, instead of like a semester. So that's, that's a way we can maintain some of our programming without losing these options for kids. Uh, you know, we wanna make, make sure that they're getting their, uh, uh, their elective options still, but we just might have to reduce it from semester to quarter, uh, so that's, that's a possibility. You know, we'll, we'll have to kind of wait and see how this all kind of plays out, but, uh, I wanted to make sure everybody kind of knew that too. So, uh, before I go to Flight Pass, does anybody have any questions on the Program of Studies? I'm sure you probably saw some things or may have questions.
Go ahead, Anna.
So you just said that, you know, the electives might change up and I can totally respect that. Can you talk about kind of, if they don't change, um, what the process will be for kids in seventh and eighth grade? Um, kind of opting into their electives, how is that process? I know that's been a question in years past of how that gets sorted out and, you know, trying to get the kids into things that are in their interest. Can you talk about what that process might look like?
Yeah, um, so I, as far as that goes, I mean, it's, it's what the students, you know, it's, it's really, uh, up to what the students wanna choose. Now, in saying that, sometimes, uh, you know, a, a elective like band or choir might take up more spots that, that might be available for other things. Um, if it's students in band and/or choir or both, uh, they still would have options for, um, I, at lea, in seventh grade, they would have at least four elective options, uh, available to them possibly, uh, well, actually, I, I take that back, it would be, uh, um, well, they, okay, they, they have four, four, uh, elective, I, I guess what we would call elective-type classes, but they, they would be already predetermined for the seventh grade. Um, so I think that's art, uh, life skills, uh, let's see, what else? Little language and, uh, we're calling it computers and, and Google Prep because seventh graders are entering the high school. We wanted to kind of get them accustomed to, uh, the use of the Google platform. They're gonna already have experience with it, with sixth grade, but just some other Google things that, that, uh, might enhance their abilities with the, with the computer. Um, so those were kind of things we were looking at for seventh grade. A lot more is available for the eighth grade, but again, just like, like I said, if they, if they take a band or choir, uh, uh, that might, uh, get in the way a little bit of, of taking some of these extra classes, they'll have their choice about which ones they want. And, and so, um, you can see, uh, it was on page, uh, five of the Program of Studies for 7-8 has quite a bit of, um, you'll see a lot of electives there and they'll have a lot of choice on that, uh, and they'll register. And, and the way we do it is we're gonna give them some options beyond, so they'll register and then we want some backups just in case, uh, we can't fill a course or things like that. Um, but, uh, but that's, that's kind of how we would do it. I don't know if that helps answer your question, Anna, or do you need a little bit more on that? Okay?
More or less, that answers my question. I just know that in the past there were, you know, some issues with, um, like kids who wanted to take art and couldn't get in and then kids who didn't wanna take art, but were stuck in an art class. And I know some of that is just like how things shake out with how you have to divide up kids. Um, but I think if I'm remembering correctly, that there had been some discussion about, um, you know, kind of how to structure that in a way that tried to make it a little bit more, um, accessible for kids to get into the things that they actually wanted to. And I just wasn't sure. I know the pandemic throws everything, um, but.
Yeah, I, I'm with you though. I, I wanna make sure students get the choices they want. Um, so, and, and sometimes what happens is we just have so few students that sign up for a particular class. It, we just have to close it out and that's unfortunate. Uh, I would say this though, most of the time that doesn't really, i- i- at least in the eighth grade, I don't, we don't see that as often. Um, but sometimes it'll happen. It depends, really, it, it oftentimes will depend on how many students take band, choir or both. And, and then, uh, a, a, a foreign language to start, you know, cause they can get high school credit in the eighth grade, uh, with that, so.
Thanks for that great question, Anna. Nikki?
Okay, okay, George, so my understanding is that, um, I'm just, um, focusing on the seventh and eighth because that's just what we were talking about and that's what, where I pulled my screen up. So if they were to elect any of these extracur, not extracurricular, but these different activities, they would still get credit, correct?
Yeah, they, so, so these elective classes, uh, so if you look at like that, uh, you know, they're, obviously they got their four cores. Uh, and then, uh, after that, we do require, uh, in eighth, both in seventh and eighth grade, a one semester of FIAD. Um, and then, um, we'll, um, uh, we, in, in seventh grade, we have Project Lead the Way and Health, uh, that are required. And then, um, and then in eighth grade, uh, we've added Intro to Fight, Flight Paths and Perspectives. And, and so this year, for instance, our students are taking Intro to Flight Paths, uh, as a, as eighth graders. Um, and they're, uh, it's a semester-long class, along with, uh, Perspectives is also a semester-long class. However, uh, you know, we, I, I wanted to make sure we could fit those both in without having to, uh, get in the way. So we've made them quarter-long classes as a kind of together, uh, you know, a, a pairing. So, um, so that was, that was, those are required. Uh, the Intro to Flight Paths is of course their first, uh, kind of delving into what's going to be the career pathways that, that, uh, they'll have in 9 through 12. So that's, and, and this year's eighth grade, just, uh, so you guys know, this is our first group that will go through their entire high school career with the career pathways. So that's, this is kind of that first step. Um, and then after that, Nikki, you're, you're right, the rest of those are electives. And they may, we might do them in quarters, we might do them in semesters. It depends kind of on what, what we have available as far as, um, you know, monies and things like that. So that might have some impact.
Okay, and just one more question. Um, I've got a little bit of background information on this and I just think this is, sky's the limit and really wonderful, but a, a grading system maybe? Do, is it gonna be this traditional or are you gonna, are we gonna create something of our own?
Okay, very, uh, very interesting. Um, we, uh, we are looking at, at doing something, uh, along the lines of more, um, what you might call, uh, uh, standards-based type grading where it's a little bit, it's, it, it's more focused on summative assessment, uh, not so much on homework, um, and, um, we, uh, um, you know, ba, it's based on a student's ability. Do they know the, it, it, the grade is based on their knowledge as opposed to their work ethic per se. Um, and, uh, and I think that, now that, that can be a controversial kind of concept and we have been having some discussions on that. I just want, you know, uh, we, we've been talking about that with our site team recently. Um, I think this is gonna be an ongoing conversation, uh, with our, with our, uh, teachers. Um, it's, it's, um, it can be a little bit controversial because some, some of the, uh, teachers', um, homework is very important to the, the, the class and it, and it should have some, it should be counted for something. So it's gonna be striking that balance between what, how much homework, uh, do we, how much homework do we value? And then how much value goes into the summative assessment, which is really, that's, that's the, uh, uh, the thing that's, you know, basically measuring their, their learning, uh, at the end of a unit per se, so.
And that is a whole can of worms for another day.
Yeah, it is, absolutely. So that, that's, yeah, I don't know if we want, I don't wanna go too far into that one.
Right, uh, questions, more questions about the Program of Studies? This is very comprehensive and a lot of stuff to read, but I'm glad that we're thinking about it. And I know how much work we did last year, moving from four, uh, classes a day to the seven or eight-hour period. We've put a lot of time and effort and energy into already moving that way. And so, uh, the pandemic's kind of put a big, uh, pause on all of that, but it's great to see that we're planning, uh, this fall, moving back to what we were anticipating a year ago. So that's an exciting move forward, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions for George about the Program of Studies? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Winger Flight Path Guide, Grades 7-8 Program of Study and Grades 9 through 12 Program of Study as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Holly, seconded by Nikki Buck. Moved by Holly, seconded by Nikki. Any other discussion?
Do we need to add a provision in there that corrections can be made for typos and things like that, or is that just assumed?
I'm assuming that typos can be, um, I think it's the main content is what we're voting on, but I think if there's typos or things that, you know, grammar things, um, Arlen?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, uh, somewhere similar to that, um, I still think we need, when the opportunity presents it in this, to, under Flight Pass, put another definition in parentheses underneath it from time to time, just to simplify it because I really believe there is an issue with a lot of people not understanding that term. And yes, you can read it in that one area, but in other places it says, well, to help prepare you, but I just think it would be good if they would study this and see if there are places where maybe a small, in parentheses, uh, college career readiness or whatever it happens to be, we wanna put to it for a simple, easy-to-understand thing. Um, I'm not, I don't have the answer for it. I just know that type of thing and acronyms can goof people up from one end to the other. Um, we aren't talking Navians this year for once and I thank goodness, cause I never did understand that one.
That's really good feedback, Arlen, and, you know, maybe, uh, Carson, we can talk about working with our communications department on, um, you know, doing a little beef up about what Flight Pass is. Mick, we can work with you too to, to really, uh, uh, get that word out as we move forward and get back to our regular promit, programming for the fall. And also, um, what else was I gonna say? Oh, Anne Jacobson, you're here on the line. Um, maybe we can even highlight that in the paper, uh, really nice article moving forward about how excited we are about the, the programming that's, that we've approved and that's coming up and, you know, Flight Pass, IE, um, is, is a part of that and how excited we are about that. So, uh, Jennifer?
Thank you, Pam. You read my mind. That's exactly what I was going to say. If we could just, um, increase the communication around this. I think, I'm just so thankful Mick and George for your work on this. This is exciting to see and I love that we are able to talk about some things other than COVID and returning to school and the exciting things that have been going on in the district for the last couple of years. Um, so thank you for that. And I, I just to, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to comment before when Arlen brought up about the communication at, um, the meeting. If I could just say that it was a small group of people there, but, um, definitely, um, people that are involved in the community and involved in the schools and they still had difficulty, um, knowing exactly what Flight Pass is. And I think, George, you're absolutely right that part of that is because we had such a large break because of everything that's going on with COVID. And so, um, this is to me a perfect opportunity to get that information out there now that it's going to be in the hands of our students. And, um, I think we just need to spread that far and wide in the community so they know what their dollars have gone toward, um, because of the referendum two years ago and, um, just the exciting things that are happening. Our, our community needs that, so thank you.
Yeah, you bet. I, uh, yeah, I, I think, uh, you know, it, I appreciate the feedback about the communication because i- i- it's hard to know sometimes, you know, who, who are, who, who are attracting with this and, and, and who's, who's understanding it. And this is good feedback for us and, and we do have, uh, some work ahead of us if, if, uh, if people are not understanding it. So, uh, this definitely is helpful.
Jennifer, so well-stated. Thank you for, uh, for sharing that because I think you're right. We all need to celebrate some really great things and move forward, so that's great. So the motion is to, uh, approve the, the Flight Path Guide, Grades 7-8 Program of Study and Grades 9 through 12 Program of Study as presented. Motion made by Holly, seconded by Nikki. Any further discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote, starting with Arlen Derrick's.
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, passes 7-0. Wonderful. Lots to celebrate there, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, the Joint Powers Agreement.
Don Wetheren is here to discuss the agreement.
And I have to apologize, I'm having like Jennifer a little technology. I don't have the best reception where I'm at right now, so it looks like I'm gonna have to either use my mic or my camera. So it looks like it's gonna be the mic. Um, I just wanted to come and just point out, there are three documents, um, some background information in your board packet. Then there is also a new agreement that are hoping that you will approve today and then a resolution. Uh, just a little bit of background, in May of 1996, the school district and the, um, city of Red Wing established the operations of, or they established a, a joint powers agreement, um, to jointly sponsor recreation programs in the community. This agreement established not only a formal structure with bylaws, but also a governing board, which was termed the Joint Powers Board. Over the course of 24 years that this agreement has been in existence, both the city and the school district, meaning the piece, the component of this school district is Red Wing, uh, Community Education. So we are the, the governing or the part of the school district that operates the joint powers component and the community recreation component, um, that the relationship just has, had evolved. And the agreement, um, that was originally put into place did not meet the needs of the growing and expanding program. We've added components and we have moved on from that original governing board. And we've also, uh, developed, um, a, a lot more community partnerships that we've worked underneath this agreement. So the key concerns or the primary concerns were really the compensation that the city gave the school district and not meet the needs or keep pace with, um, just the cost of living increases and the amount of programs that we were adding. We added Live Healthy Red Wing, we also added the Park Naturalist Program, were two of the biggest, um, components. We also added a second outdoor rink that we operate and coordinate. So, um, that was one of the things that we needed to look at was how we were gonna increase the funding that was given to the school district from the city. We also needed clarification on the duties and the associated expenses with the programs that were added. Uh, we also realized, both the city and the school district, that the governing structure of the partnership was not effective. And that the insurance coverage, the which accounts amounts to about $12,000 a year, was, um, excessive and really created a financial burden. So, uh, for the last several months, the city attorney's office drafted a new joint powers agreement language. And the city council members Becky Norton and Dean Hove, along with the school board representatives, um, on the board, which Holly Tower and Jim Bryant, met and reviewed the revised agreement several times throughout the fall. on the board, which Holly Tower and Jim Bryant, met and reviewed the revised agreement several times throughout the fall. And then, um, on January twenty-first of twenty twenty-one, we had a joint powers meeting and the recommendation was made for the school district and the city council to terminate the nineteen ninety-six agreement and to, um, replace it with this new agreement that you find in your packet. Then on January twenty-sixth, which was just last week, the Advisory Council of Community Education, which is, um, mandated under Minnesota Department of, or Minnesota statute, um, also made agreement that they would approve this recommendation to move forward. So that was last week. And I, again, um, I can't express enough, you know, gratitude, you know, Jim and Holly put time and energy into this and reviewed it. Anna, before she was the representative of the advisory council, we looked at this for many months. And we went through the language and back and forth. We just knew that the Joint Powers Board was not, um, effective. It just really weighed down specifically community education, that every time we bought hot dog buns for the, um, for the pool concession stand, that originally the, this intent of this agreement was that every single financial thing would have to go through the board. It just wasn't reasonable at this time. So, um, what we would like to move forward with is to terminate the existing nineteen ninety-six agreement, adopt the new one, and then to adopt the resolution. After this meeting here, then it will go to city council, and they will be looking at it next Monday evening to do the same thing that, uh, the school board is being asked to do. So. Does anybody have any questions? You know, Jim and Holly, Anna, you know, don't hesitate to jump in. Again, I know this took time. Everybody is busy and I really appreciate the effort that Holly and Jim put into it, and also Anna and the advisory council have looked at this many months. And just so this group also knows, the city attorney wrote the agreement, but the school district attorney also looked at the language and approved it. And also, uh, Jackie also looked at it. So I feel very comfortable that the way we're moving forward is where we need to be. We really appreciate the relationship that we have with the city. And, um, the partnership was worked really well, but it has evolved and we need to move on from a joint powers board and go to a simple agreement.
Uh, Jim is in the queue and then Arlen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, Dawn said it very well. Uh, she's put a lot of time and energy into this too, as we're, uh, discussing it and presented here today. Um, and I'll, I'll just echo the, uh, partnership that we have with the city of Red Wing to provide this service in the community is, is just beyond imaginable. It's just great, because you got two entities actually working well together and, uh, for various reasons. And, uh, I was just, I was just proud and happy to be selected to be on that committee and for the last few years, because I heard so many great things about them. When I was on the Community Ed Board back in, uh, oh, back in the nineties, I think, or eighties, something like that, and there was a great discussion and great, um, ideas about this. But, uh, I'll let Arlen speak, but I just wanted to echo that, a lot of work by Dawn and others to make this happen. And, uh, again, thanks to the city of Red Wing for being a great partner with us down, uh, down in the past and even going forward too. So, thank you.
I promised Jim and Dean Hove I wouldn't talk about the last time they served on the, the Joint Powers Board. So, but they had both served, um, a few years back on the original agreement.
Arlen?
Yeah, thank you. I think the question was answered by Dawn, but I'll just ask it again. She mentioned that our school attorney has also reviews this, reviewed this document. So I want to just ask, has their attorney or district attorney reviewed the final draft?
Um, the language, nothing has changed since the attorney, uh, read the agreement. Or since he approved it, or they approved it, nothing had changed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So Dawn, you said that we needed a motion to approve and then a resolution. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, is.
Approve the.
Yes. And I can read the resolution, um, whenever you want to look at termination of the nineteen ninety-six agreement, and then we would adopt the new dra, the new agreement that is in your packet.
Madam Chair, I move to terminate the existing May nineteen six, nineteen ninety-six jointly sponsored community recreation program agreement and replace it with the new twenty twenty-one Joint Powers Agreement.
Anna will second.
All right, motion made by Jim, seconded by Annie. Anna, any other discussion?
Annie or Anna, which one?
I know, I'm sorry.
I think Paul had her.
Anna?
Oh, I had my name in the queue, but it was just the motion and Jim beat me.
Gotcha. All right.
And was there a Paul in there too?
Nope, I was just going to bring it to attention that Anna was in the queue before anybody, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a roll call vote on the motion to terminate the, the existing joint sponsored community rec program agreement and replace it with the new twenty twenty-one Joint Powers Agreement. Uh, we'll start with Anna Ostendorf.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye, sorry, Anna, I didn't see your name in the queue.
Mr. Buck, uh, Mr.
No, it's okay. Just speaking to my inner, my inner mister.
Can't get it all right.
Uh, aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So that passes seven to zero. And then we'll go to the resolution. Uh, it is posted in your board pack. And it is a full page long.
And I can just read the top. It says, Resolution to Terminate the May nineteen ninety-six Joint Powers Agreement between the City of Red Wing and Independent School District Two fifty-six relating to the establishment and operation of a jointly sponsored community recreation program and adopt a new Joint Powers Agreement.
All right, so we need someone to make the motion to approve that resolution?
I'll move that this time.
Anna?
Jim will second.
And Jim, all right. Anna makes the resolu, resolution and Jim seconds it. Any other discussion? Then we will take a roll call vote, uh, to approve the resolution, starting with Holly Tower.
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. The resolution passes seven to zero.
Again, thank you Holly and Jim and Anna for your time. I really appreciate, um, just your expertise and your willingness to work on this. It, it's been a long time in the making and we're glad that it's moving forward.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn. And, um, Jim and Anna and Holly. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the school calendar for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thank you. Uh, the Calendar Committee has the attached recommendation for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, you'll note that, uh, classes will start after Labor Day with graduation on Friday, June third, consistent with tradition. Uh, the committee also recommends a week-long spring break starting on March twenty-eighth. This is different than what we've done over the last four or five years, when we had a week-long spring break during the first full week of March. The reason the Calendar Committee would like it to start on March twenty-eighth is that it's between sports seasons, and so all students will have a better chance of experiencing some time off from school. Uh, the only other thing I'd like to add is that, uh, the high school administration would like to review the possibility of having seniors finish the year a few days earlier than everybody else. Uh, it was kind of brought up later in the discussion, and so uh, I thought it was prudent to go ahead with this calendar, so people know when Christmas break is and spring break. And then the board could consider, uh, changing the last day for seniors at a later time.
Um, and just as a member of that committee, um, it is made up of, um, teachers, paraprofessionals, coaches, um, who else is on that committee? Jim and Carson. Carson, Jim and I are on there. Um, but there's a, a good group of, of folks that, uh, weighed in on all of this. Um, and we always start with kind of last year's calendar. We look at days that are, um, needed. We look at professional development, um, and everybody gets a chance to weigh in on that. Any?
I'll add that there is a possibility that, uh, we could review the twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar uh, this spring. So we'd even have a year jumpstart, uh, compared to what we've done in the past. So don't be shocked if, if that might be forthcoming as well.
Uh, Jennifer and then Arlen?
Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve the school calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I will second that motion.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Holly. Any other discussion? Arlen, you're in the queue.
Thank you. Um, I've thought about this quite a bit, and every year I keep coming up with the same thing and I'm not a real proponent of taking an entire week off for a spring break. I really think we should have more time off at Easter time. And it wouldn't hurt my feelings if we figured out how to get out of school a little bit earlier after, maybe at Memorial Day or instead of running out as late as we are. And so I will be voting no on this.
All right, so the motion's on the table, made by Jennifer, seconded by Holly to adopt the calendar as presented. Uh, we will start the roll call vote then with, uh, Jennifer.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
No.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that passes six to one. And I'll just thank the Calendar Committee. I know it's, uh, it was, uh, um, some work to look at all of those dates and, uh, make sure that we had everything, uh, in there. So that was great work. So thank you for those, uh, that worked on that committee. All right, next is school board and administrative reports. And of course, we got through all of the school board reports already. So, uh, Carson, I'll put it, uh, back to you for your administrative report.
Well, I'll make it quick and just highlight a few things. Uh, first of all, the original, uh, administrative report was posted on Wednesday. Uh, but then I did add and change a few items today. And so I will kind of focus on the, the items that were added today, because you may not have had a chance to, to read them in advance. Uh, first of all, employee recognition has been a, a great opportunity for us to honor retirees and people who have worked in the district for at least twenty-five years. Uh, because of COVID last year, we were not able to provide uh, a celebration at the end of the year. Uh, and so the plans are starting to form, uh, that we will celebrate last year's group and this year's group, uh, toward the end of the year. So more details will be forthcoming, but I wanted to make sure that you knew, know that, uh, we value that, um, uh, celebration. Uh, we've had several human resources issues, uh, related to our change in health insurance companies. I covered H R A payments at an earlier meeting. Uh, but we've also had some other issues that have, uh, propped up, uh, recently, uh, including, uh, you know, some difficulties making clinic appointments because the insurance providers changed, uh, and those kinds of things. In addition, uh, we had one employee, uh, mention that, uh, uh, he or she was not able to access the Employee Assistance Program. And so, uh, we are looking into that. Uh, some other people have been able to access it, but we're trying to figure out what's, what's going on there. Uh, Jackie, uh, Peridus and Amy French are the contact people for that. And so they're, they're going to follow up and make sure that things are operating smoothly for our staff members. And then finally, just a reminder about online learning for next year. Uh, we had it this year and we have every intention to, uh, conduct online learning for our students next year as well. So, uh, we think that, uh, we can actually put a really good product on the table. Uh, we can, uh, you know, access some current curriculum, perhaps through Edgenuity, but then hopefully we can develop our own classes uh, for high school kids. Uh, we would be able to offer shared time opportunities where kids could take some classes via the online curriculum, but then take other classes like art, family consumer science, industrial tech in our building. Uh, we think that's much better than online options of those particular classes. Uh, and, um, uh, we want to be able to provide, uh, personal connections uh, between students in Red Wing and between students and their teacher, uh, you know, who would be employed by Red Wing Public Schools. Uh, online schools across the state and country cannot do that. It's impossible. And so I'm confident that we can actually put a much better product on the table, uh, that would serve kids, uh, in Red Wing. So just to let you know that that is our intent. Uh, Sherri Johnson did submit an, uh, an application to the state uh, for online learning for next year on behalf of, of G C D schools. Uh, but we want to maintain those other, uh, parts to the online learning as well. So, uh, we're working with, uh, multiple entities to make that happen. That's all I have. Everything else is in the written report.
Does anybody have any questions for our superintendent? No. All right, great. Uh, well then, upcoming meetings, uh, I'll just highlight, our next school board meeting is on Tuesday, February sixteenth, uh, at six P M. Currently, that is still our virtual platform. We'll continue looking at ways that we can, uh, brainstorm ideas of how to get, uh, some in person, but at, at the very least, we want to move to maybe some sort of hybrid option where if we physically can't make it because of illness or quarantining, that you'll still be able to join us. Uh, so we're still looking at those options, but as of right now, we're still virtually meeting. Um, that same evening at four forty-five is legislative and policy meeting, or is that a meeting on Monday? Excuse me.
No, that's on Tuesday, just like you said.
Okay, good. Uh, Monday, February twenty-second, uh, I believe is that the finance meeting? At four forty-five? That's the last. And then we'll have a, uh, workshop night. It's not a formal school board meeting, but that's our opportunity to have a workshop. Uh, we're going to be talking, currently, our, our, our plan is to talk about, uh, school board organization and structure. Um, and we have the school board, uh, packet. You want to explain a little bit more about that, Carson? You've been working on that and it's going to the Policy Committee.
Yeah, we have a, a really rough draft of school board procedures and protocols. And so I'll be running that through the, uh, new, uh, Policy and Legislative Committee. Uh, so they have some feedback before we take it to the workshop session.
And one of the things that Nikki brought up, which I think is really important that we think about for that workshop evening, is that for our new school board members, and they've, they've been given all these new committee assignments. And, and Nikki and I spent some time a couple of weeks ago trying to figure out when all of those meetings met. Uh, and so if we could figure out a way that we could, um, inform new members and, and new, uh, it doesn't even have to be new board members, but just new members of committees on when those meetings do occur, um, that would be helpful. And it's not necessarily the finance, the legislative policy, those kinds of committees, but it's all the other ones that we are tasked, um, to be a part of. So, um, just be thinking about that. Uh, and then, uh, the negotiations team is meeting with the COCs this week. Uh, anything else that anybody would like to highlight about future meetings?
I know, uh, Nikki, uh, had a suggestion for a future meeting topic. So, uh, Nikki, uh, if you wouldn't mind sharing?
Yes, um, so I think it was last week, I met with, um, Red Wing Sustainability, um, Commission on behalf of, um, Land and Environment through Prairie Island, and we're creating, um, a potential partnership. We're just, um, we just got the okay from our. We're just, we just got the okay from our council to go ahead and create a subcommittee slash advisory committee for this new partnership. So it'll be three members from Land and Environment and then whoever the sustainability commission wants to join for this. But anyways, when pitched with this idea last year, every year actually, you know, starting in spring, I clean up Hemanicha. Well, last year it was, it was pretty bad and not to any fault by any one person. What I thought may have happened is like maybe a couple, a few garbage bags flew out of the garbage truck and just littered the whole bottom because it was a lot of broken down plastic, which is really, really, really tough to catch and get before it gets into the water. And so I decided that I wanted to do a kickoff event, make it Earth Day every day. So it's going to kind of be like Prairie Island Land and Environment's baby, but they're entering into a partnership because we're essentially cleaning up the streets of Red Wing. So I've been really focusing on cigarette butts a lot lately because in my job, I get paid by the shipping tobacco grant. So we work a lot with MDH and ACAF, American Indian Cancer Foundation. And so just learning through working at the gardens and stuff, the harmful effects, not only cigarette butts do for us, but for the earth and especially being a river city. It's not like the earth where it can just travel around. Once it gets trapped in the river, it's in there. And the harmful effects of not only just garbage, but like cigarette butts in particular that are to our river systems, that affects all of us as a community and especially the Dakota people because our very being is, that's our name, you know, we're the spirit of the water dwellers. Our entire being depends on that, the Mississippi River Valley. So I thought about, who's my target audience? Well, the kids, of course, you know. They are so passionate about things that they just want to be part of something and part of something really good. So I thought about, you know, we're the adults, we're the ones that lead by example on how they learn effective partnerships. And so it's just part of this ongoing work with Prairie Island and Red Wing that has been going on. But what everybody says that, I keep pitching this too, they want to get the school district involved. Both sides are really, really, really super, super pushing of getting the school district involved. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a start off kickoff event. These two entities are going to join into a partnership and we're going to start a dot com. We're gonna, because if we start a dot com and people see community members wearing bright shirts with this dot com, they're going to wonder what we're doing. And that, the internet is the fastest way to get information to anybody. So they look up this dot com. We can look for sponsors, ELC or Friends of the Bluff, I'm part of Friends of the Bluff too. And they, they're really super excited to be a part of it. You know, sponsors can have their business website where it can lead to. They can make donations. We'll be doing monthly, monthly drawings. If you do a selfie and then tag it to this post, that enters you in a chance for a drawing for a really cool, it's a garbage kit. We're working on terminology. You get a really cool handy dandy garbage picker upper like Nikki has, you know, that makes cleaning up trash so much funer than what it is. And like some dry bags to tote the garbage around. You can reuse them for anything, PPE supplies, cool, really cool, bright neon t-shirt to protect you while you're picking up trash. And then, you know, the information of the dot coms on there. And let's see if I put everything on point. But we thought, everybody thought, well, what about the schools and making it an after school program? Because we do have to get a little creative with the children and how we get them to, you know, because this isn't going away anytime soon. So they thought about this would be a great after school program that the kids can get together and clean up trash and get to hang out with their friends and connecting with earth. So my three main thoughts are we're going to shoot for community engagement between both communities. We're showing them how to be respectful and honor one another while having the same common goal in mind, which is taking care of our earth and really targeting that youth. I said, I am only going to be in this environmental advocacy for 20 more years. It is, you know, it's rewarding work, but it is also exhausting. So I got, we got to start finding future environmentalists, you know. And, you know, you hit mental, emotional, spiritual and physical all in one group. You know, there's just so many good things about this that, you know, hopefully we can go nationwide and showing people like how well our community is healing together, growing together and creating a better future for the next seven generations.
Oh, Nikki, that is amazing. Thank you. Holly, your name's in the queue.
I was just going to say the same thing. Fantastic and very exciting. And how far are you into the school district process? Because I know we're going to put this on an agenda as an item later, but what kind of help do you need now?
Well, I just, I was, so we just got it approved with council. I just met with sustainability last week, so I'm going to be reaching out to sustainability tomorrow and getting the ball rolling and committing, making a subcommittee or advisory. And so I just, I told them, yeah, I've got kind of a lead on the school board. I can, you know, I can drop this with my friends and my colleagues. And so I just reached out to Carsten and the, just to see how I'm, you know, I'm learning everything. It's very, again, very different than how we operate on tribal side. So any guidance and, you know, direction that is given to me is always greatly appreciated. So he kind of just led me to delivering this, you know. But like I said, we're going to probably try and kick off. So I got a lot of work to do. I have a to do list to create tomorrow on this, but.
We have naturalists and we have wealthy Red Wing. I mean, like those entities within the city and within the community head could embrace some type of group.
Yes.
So many legs.
Yes, and so I, I can definitely, if we want to get this on an agenda, I have all the logistics and everything typed up and stuff. So once I can get everything like more detailed and ideas of how it's going to work to all of us by then. And so that way we can maybe move forward on what kind of involvement we want to be on this project as a school district.
Yeah.
So that's just kind of was, yeah, okay, wonderful. Thanks, Holly.
Yep.
And by the way, Nicole or Nikki, Molly Kiefer is the, kind of the advisor or the primary contact at the high school for the high school sustainability club. And so that might be a natural tie in. The one thing that George mentioned today is that we haven't had a lot of clubs meeting because of COVID. So it may be a little slow starting at first, but I know that Molly and the students would have a passion for, or would share a passion with you and so many others in our community.
Yeah, the thing about us environmentalists, we can make meetings anywhere, inside or out.
Thank you for sharing your vision and your passion, Nikki. That's, it's exciting to hear and have some, some fresh energy. So thank you for sharing that and I, however I can help you, let me know. All right, that brings us to our final agenda item, which is adjournment, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn made by Holly, looking for a second?
Anna, second.
All right, moved by Holly, seconded by Anna. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, we are adjourned at 8:01. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Bye bye.